The live stream's now started, Chair.
Good evening, colleagues. In the absence of the Mayor, as Deputy Mayor, I will be the person presiding over our council meeting today. Owing to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, the government guidance issued to stay at home, it has not been possible to hold meetings of the Borough Council in person. The council has therefore made arrangements under the Coronavirus Act 2020 to hold this council meeting virtually. It is these regulations that enable the council to hold this meeting of Borough Council without any of us being physically present in the council chamber. This meeting of the council will remain accessible to the public as it's being streamed live on YouTube, which will be available for repeated viewings afterwards. Therefore, elected members, officers and the wider public are able to follow the law and government guidance with regards to staying at home and protecting our NHS whilst ensuring decision-making and the democratic process continues. I'd like to remind members that the Council Code of Conduct still applies to virtual meetings and the same procedures undertaken in physical meetings still apply. For example, waiting for the Chair to give permission to speak. I would ask members to please try to limit disturbances wherever possible. After the introductory roll call, all members and officers should please mute their microphones to reduce feedback and background noise, which will make the meeting easier to follow. Please ensure mobile phones and other electronic devices, TVs, tablets and so on are on silent during the meeting. The Strategy and Democracy Support Officer will mute microphones as necessary if there's background noise in order to assist members. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by physically raising their hand or by using the raise-brace-hand function and being invited to speak by the Chair as usual. When members do speak, I would ask that they identify themselves for the benefit of any members of the public or press who are observing the meeting. Voting will be managed by the acting head of legal services and Strategy and Democracy Officers who are mincing the meetings. If an item requires a vote, the acting head of legal services will read out the name of each member in turn in alphabetical order and ask them how they wish to vote. Each member will need to unmute their microphone before speaking. Once a member has given their vote, then microphones should be muted again. The acting head of legal services will record the outcome of the voting and announce it at the meeting. If an item does not appear to be contentious, I will ask members whether any member disagrees or wishes to abstain. In a situation where there is dissenting voice, a vote will be taken. I now ask each member to confirm their attendance by undertaking a roll call and asking all participating members to please reply present. Can members please unmute their microphones now? councillor Emo?
Present.
councillor Anglin?
Present.
councillor Atkinson?
Present.
councillor Bell?
Present.
councillor Boyack?
Apologies.
councillor Brady?
Present.
councillor Carter?
Present.
councillor Dean?
Present.
As I said before, I have apologies for councillor Dick. councillor Dix?
Present.
councillor Dixon?
Present.
councillor Donaldson? I saw him earlier.
He's on there.
councillor Donaldson, can you unmute your microphone to say that you're present? I'll come back. councillor Duncan? No. councillor Ellison?
Present.
councillor Donaldson is back on now.
Okay, thank you. councillor Flynn?
Present.
councillor Forman?
Present.
councillor Francis?
Present.
councillor Gibson?
Yeah.
councillor Hamilton?
Present.
councillor Hay?
Present.
councillor Heatherington?
Present.
I have apologies for councillor Keegan. councillor Kilgaw?
Present.
councillor Leesk?
Present.
Welcome back councillor Leesk.
Thank you.
councillor E. Malcolm?
Apologies.
Sorry.
councillor N. Maxwell?
Present.
councillor N. E. Maxwell?
Present.
councillor McCabe?
Present.
councillor McHugh?
Apologies, but...
councillor J. Milburn?
Present.
councillor P. Milburn?
Present.
councillor Peacock?
Present.
I have apologies for councillor Perry. councillor Porthouse?
Present.
I have apologies for councillor Proudlock. councillor Punchin?
Apologies.
councillor Purvis?
Present.
councillor Roberts?
Present.
councillor Robertson?
Killie.
councillor Robertson?
Killie.
He's here. councillor Sewell? No. councillor Smith?
Present.
councillor Stevenson? No. councillor Strike?
Present.
councillor Taylor?
Present.
councillor Thompson?
Present.
councillor Traynor?
Present.
councillor A. Walsh?
Present.
councillor M. Walsh?
Present.
councillor Welsh?
Present.
And I have apologies for councillor West. Okay, that's all of the notes taken and all the apologies taken. The first item of business is declarations of interest. We've received notification of a number of declarations. Before I invite members to declare an interest, I have a declaration to announce myself. As the Mayor, as a member of the Standards Committee, I need to declare an interest in the second agenda item and I will be the Chair at that point. councillor Heatherington, you have a declaration of interest?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also have a declaration in item three as I'm a member of the Standards Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Smith, you have a declaration of interest? You're on mute councillor Smith. Thank you.
Sorry. Yes, I have an unpecuniary interest to declare in item three.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations of interest?
Yes, Chair.
Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor.
I can hear councillor Thompson.
Councillor Thompson, yes, to declare an interest in Agenda Item Three as a member of the Standards Committee.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Chair.
councillor Robertson?
Yes, I was a victim of the kangaroo court and I've got a declaration of interest.
Thank you councillor Robertson.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to verbally make a declaration before we move to next business? Okay. If you have a disclosable pecuniary interest in any item which prevents you from participating in the debate and any voting, the Strategy and Democracy Officer will place you in the waiting room during the discussion and decisions of that item. Once the item has been considered, the Strategy and Democracy Officer will allow you back into the meeting. The next item of business is to consider a report of the head of the Corporate and External Affairs, which is the monitoring officer, on the appointment of an independent remuneration panel. I ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report.
Hold the order, Chair. Hold the order, please.
A point of order, we haven't started the debate yet. What's the point of order councillor Robertson?
Well, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay.
Could I ask you, has councillor Ed Malton been arrested? Is that why he's not attending?
I'm sorry, I'm not taking that as a point of order. Thank you. councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As colleagues may be aware, national legislation requires that local authorities must take into account the recommendations of an independent remuneration panel before making any changes to special responsibility allowances or related members allowances. The term of office of the previously appointed independent remuneration panel has ended. Following a recruitment process overseen by the monitoring officer, we are now recommending three new candidates for appointment to the independent remuneration panel for the coming four-year period. Ms Samantha Teig, Ms Jane Cutterson and Mr Stephen Elliott. Between them, Ms Teig, Ms Cutterson and Mr Elliott bring a wealth of knowledge, experience and skills as well as a balanced range of backgrounds and perceptives. Once appointed, the independent remuneration panel will be able to proceed with carrying out a review of members allowances during the period of March and April 2021 with a view of reporting to full council with recommendations in May 2020. I invite members to join me in endorsing these three excellent candidates for appointment and in thanking the monitoring officer for her work. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Okay, councillor Dixon, is that seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? councillor Francis, did you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, please, Madam Deputy Mayor. All it was. It's just a quick question really. Reading the papers, if we're required under the Local Authority Regulations 2003 to discuss this item prior to obviously making the annual scheme for members allowances and expenses, I'm just wondering why this hasn't already been tabled for the January or February meetings or why it didn't go on. I know there was originally proposed a meeting for April the 8th, which hasn't gone ahead, but instead we've got this extraordinary meeting called with less than 24 hours notice given and that just seems like very poor planning for something that was predictable and I'm wondering why we find ourselves in that seemingly avoidable situation.
Can I just say that the Mayor did ask for the extraordinary meeting to be called on Friday? It's unfortunate that we didn't get to know about it until much later, but it was asked for on Friday following the Standards Committee meeting.
I understand that, but this particular item that we're talking about now needs to be agreed before the end of April. So I'm wondering why it's come to an extraordinary meeting rather than just being programmed into a scheduled meeting?
Madam Deputy Mayor, obviously the meeting for April, councillor Francis, will not be happening due to Pirda. So consequently, the report wasn't ready for the January meeting, which would have meant the next meeting would have been the annual meeting. So that's why councillor Francis... Pardon?
So we had a meeting in January, we had a meeting in February. I understand about the restricted period and Pirda, but would this have come under the restrictions?
Sorry, you went on mute just towards the end there councillor Francis. I didn't quite catch the end of your question.
I'm just wondering if this is an agenda item that wouldn't have been able to be discussed because of Pirda. I know that sometimes full council meetings do happen during that restricted period.
Well, we aren't holding a meeting in April due to Pirda because it is in the Pirda period from the 26th of March, which you're aware of. This report was not prepared in January or February. It could have come to the May meeting, which then would have been appointing the remuneration panel appointments and then having to discuss and debate the agenda item. So that's the only reason.
We knew that the local elections were going to happen in May a very long time ago. We knew that certainly, surely long enough in advance that this could have been just done as a regular meeting rather than needing an extraordinary meeting.
This has just come on the agenda, this hasn't been prepared for to come onto the extraordinary meeting, councillor Francis. This is just an additional agenda item to come to this meeting.
I understand that, but if it has to happen, if it has to happen before a certain time, I'm wondering why it hasn't happened already and why it's been spotted into this meeting?
Yeah, well, your comments actually notice councillor Francis. You know, it's brought to this meeting so you can ratify the positions so that, as it's already mentioned in the report, you know, they will look at during the month of March and April, relevant information that they need to deliver annual council in May. Councillor Francis.
I have councillor Hamilton then councillor Roberts. Councillor Hamilton? You're on mute councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Couldn't remember your title there for a second.
A long one.
Yes. As I'm sure you're aware, I'll have gone through this report with a fine-tooth comb as I do with most things. And I've just got a question and it's under the person circumstances, which is on, and I think it'll be the officer that will need to answer this, which is on page 17. And I think it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th one down. It says you must have no personal, legal or contractual relationship with South Tyneside Council, its members or co-opted members or employees. One of the people recommended has registered as their correspondence address on Companies House. South Tyneside Council Town Hall and Civic Offices, Westall Road, South Shields, Tyne and Wear, United Kingdom, N E 332 R L. So I was just wondering if that person actually does have a relationship with the council and if not, why they're using the council's address as their registered correspondence address with Companies House because it just seems very strange to me.
Mr Romney, are you going to answer that one?
Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm not aware of the answer. Would one of the other officers maybe be able to assist?
Sorry, I couldn't hear John at all there.
Mr Romney is not aware of the answer or any of the other officers who are present able to answer that question?
There isn't any explanation that I can give at this meeting, Madam Mayor, but I will pick this up outside the meeting to find out. There is no understanding that I can think of as to why an individual would be registered at Companies House with the address of the town hall and certainly the answers that they provided during the process would suggest that they are absolutely able to be able to fulfil this role.
I can give a little bit more information if that would help. The registration is they are a director of the Association of Accountant Technicians, which is on Companies House with the registration of the Town Hall and Civic Offices. So I just wonder if we could find ourselves in legal trouble. I don't know the answer, by the way. I'm just, I don't want to get myself into legal jeopardy, which I'm sure you'll understand if we're appointing somebody who does have that relationship.
Madam Mayor, I'm comfortable that that's a historic entry, I think, and should be removed. I'll pick that up with the individual concerned, but I have gone through all of the criteria with the individuals and I'm comfortable that they are all eligible to fulfil this role.
Okay, thank you, Mr Robertson. councillor Roberts, do you wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, thank you. Could I just ask, who asked the Mayor for to have this extra meeting, please?
Who asked the Mayor?
Who asked the Mayor to have this extra meeting?
As Deputy Mayor, I asked the Mayor if we could have a special meeting to consider the agenda items.
Well, I've not got an interest in that.
As Deputy Mayor, I chair the meetings when the Mayor is not here. So I am unable to call the meeting, so the Mayor has to call the meeting.
So could I ask why the Mayor is not here?
Because he's shielding, yeah.
He's shielding for a while, but he's been up there with cuff meetings on Zoom.
He's able to be lifted from his shielding on the 1st of April. He rang me today to say that he lifted from his shielding on the 1st of April. He has had a letter, so then he will be able to attend meetings.
What about the cuff meetings he's been attending?
He attends those on Zoom. Unfortunately, when we... Okay, I'll explain it. When we have the meetings of the full council, the Mayor does them from the Town Hall because we need to do a big screen. We can't do it from an iPad because of the number of people we have at the meeting. So I can see now, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 25 people on one screen and then I can scroll across the next screen on this large thing. So I am actually in the Town Hall conducting this meeting.
So could we not take a big screen for the Mayor, for his house? If he's Mayor of this borough, surely he should have something like that in his own house and just got it shielded?
No, we have to use a secure council website for a council meeting and that's why I'm conducting the meetings and not the Mayor because he has been shielding and he will be free from shielding on the 1st of April. I can assure you of that. Okay.
He's got no excuse at all, I mean...
Are there any other questions?
Yes, please.
Sorry, who was that?
Councillor Robertson.
Okay, councillor Robertson.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, the question that councillor Francis asked was, is the true answer that the council wanted to get the sanctions done towards me before the election, before Pirda? Is that another reason for this meeting?
Well, that had to be done at the council meeting anyway, so it's done on the back of this item that we have here.
Yeah, I get that, but everyone was saying before to councillor Francis and the leader said to councillor Francis, there wouldn't be a council meeting. So to get me for the sanctions, you have brought the meeting forward because it's 12 years since this council's had an extraordinary meeting. The last extraordinary meeting that was called was for a vote in no confidence against Ian Malcolm. This is a unique situation that you have done this to simply hit me with the sanctions and trying to humiliate me before Pirda. Is that not correct?
No, I'm sorry, that's not correct. We asked for a special meeting to be called and therefore there was business to be conducted at that meeting and we put the extra item onto this agenda.
So how come this first item is that urgent, Madam Mayor?
Because, you know, we have a statutory obligation to, since 2001, to have a team in place to look at the council's allowances. When it comes to council's allowances, we don't need to accept those recommendations, but they will probably, the recommendations will probably be brought to us at the annual meeting in May.
Right, well, I just think it's kind of almost thrown the hook at us.
Okay.
If it's 7:40, what was it just before?
Sorry.
Deputy Mayor.
Nicola, sorry, Mr Robertson, did you wish to answer that?
Just add some extra information to the fact that the process has taken longer than what I would have hoped. And that's on my responsibility. So it means that the report hasn't been able to go at the earlier meeting in February, which would have been ideal. But in order to be able to have the new independent remuneration committee consider the new allowances scheme and readiness for the annual meeting in May, they need to be appointed beforehand. Otherwise, we would be having the appointment of the panel plus the recommendations in the same meeting, which wouldn't be appropriate, which is why we need to have the appointment done now.
Okay, thank you, Mrs Robertson.
Can I have a wee point of that, Madam Mayor?
councillor Milburn, do you wish to speak?
Yes, for point of clarification, Madam Mayor, sorry. Did we say the report, the remuneration panel, wasn't ready for January meeting or February's meeting? Because we said January and now we're saying February. Could we just clear it up, please?
That's my error, councillor Milburn, it's Tracy. You know, there was, obviously the meeting in February, the report wasn't ready and I think Nicholas touched upon, they had to refresh the panel and the process has taken a little bit longer councillor Milburn. So it wasn't prepared and ready to come, councillor Milburn.
Okay.
councillor Robertson, did you wish to speak again?
Yeah, just in response to the monitoring officer, thank you, Madam Mayor. Could I ask the monitoring officer, why the same urgency has not been given to the criminal offences committed by Ed Malton? The investigation's gone on nine months now and there's no intonation that he's been before the Standards Committee.
I'm sorry, that's not for this meeting to be discussed.
Madam Mayor, I'm speaking to the monitoring officer if you don't mind.
I'm chairing this meeting councillor Robertson and I'm saying that we are not discussing that item at this meeting.
You're not allowing us to ask the monitoring officer questions?
Nicola, do you wish to answer that question?
It's not appropriate for this meeting, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
No, it wouldn't be, would it?
Okay, right, okay.
Yet again, getting rotten, cut and worn, Labour council.
Is the motion agreed that we accept these people for... Sorry. councillor Francis, did you wish to ask another question?
Yes, sorry, it was specifically a question for the monitoring officer just in response to her response, if that makes sense. I totally appreciate that and I realise that workloads have been exceedingly high in recent months and that all makes sense if the intention was to get this item ready for February. But are you able to clarify, would it have been possible to have a meeting and have that item discussed during April during Pirda?
Isn't a meeting in April on the council scheduled meetings?
I understand that, there was originally proposed to be one. The question I'm asking is, if that meeting had gone ahead, would it have been possible to discuss this agenda item at that meeting?
Yes, it would have been, but there isn't a meeting that it was able to be discussed in. So there was never an actual meeting on the schedule for April. There was a suggestion right at the beginning of the municipal year that there could be a meeting at that time, but it was never actually ratified as being on the schedule. So it was never a meeting that I could work towards to bring the paper.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Madam Mayor, please.
councillor Robertson, I hope this is a pertinent question.
Yeah, it is, it is. Is councillor Walsh going to mute himself? He's making silly noises there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yes. Down the lines of where you're just about to take a vote there, you seem to be overriding what Angela Hampton's brought to your attention. I surely would have thought that that link that she's demonstrated should stop you having this vote tonight?
Well, councillor Robertson has already said that all of the requirements have been met and that she's going to check that and she said that that address was probably historical.
With respect, Madam Mayor, miss Robertson has just answered off the cuff and the link there clearly says the council as the address and I think it's dangerous to go ahead and take this vote. Miss Robertson doesn't know the answer.
Miss Robertson?
Madam Mayor, I do know the answer. The lady in question used to be an employee of the council many years ago. I think that was a historical item on the Companies House. I've been through with her credentials and I'm satisfied that she satisfies the credentials for this role.
So an independent person has got a link to the council?
Not currently.
Okay, thank you.
councillor Hamilton, did you wish to speak again?
I was just going to say, I assume that if we did find there was a link afterwards, then the person could be removed from the panel at a later date.
I'm sure that's true, I'm sure that's true. Yes, thank you very much. Oh, we agree to accept these people as the independent?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Can we take a name vote, please?
Is there any dissent? Presumably there is a dissent, is there? You wish to take a name vote? Okay, we can do a name vote. Okay, can I ask Mr Romney to take a name vote, please?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. If councillors could indicate whether they are for or against the appointment when I call their name. councillor Emo?
For.
councillor Anglin? councillor Anglin?
Sorry, for.
Thank you. councillor Atkinson?
For.
councillor Bell?
For.
councillor Brady?
For.
councillor Carter?
For.
councillor Dean?
For.
councillor Dix? councillor Dix? Yes, thank you. councillor Dixon?
For.
For.
councillor Donaldson?
For.
councillor Ellison?
For.
councillor Flynn?
For.
councillor Forman?
For.
councillor Francis?
For.
councillor Gibson?
For.
councillor Hamilton?
For.
councillor Hay?
For.
councillor Heatherington?
For.
councillor Hobson?
For.
councillor Kilgaw?
For.
councillor Lees?
For.
Thank you. councillor N. Maxwell?
For.
councillor N. E. Maxwell?
For.
councillor McCabe?
For.
councillor J. Milburn?
For.
councillor P. Milburn?
For.
councillor Peacock?
For.
councillor Porthouse?
For.
councillor Purvis?
For.
councillor Roberts?
Abstained.
councillor Robertson?
Conflict of interest. Sorry, abstained.
Thank you. councillor Smith?
For.
councillor Strike?
For.
councillor Taylor?
For.
councillor Thompson?
For.
councillor Traynor?
For.
councillor A. Walsh?
For.
councillor M. Walsh?
For.
and councillor Welsh?
For.
Thank you. Yes, there were 37 votes for the appointments and two abstentions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Romney. The next business is to consider a report of the acting head of legal services, which provides an update of the Standards Committee held on the 19th of March. Before this item is presented, as I previously mentioned, under declarations of interest, I have declared an interest in this item, so we'll leave the meeting during the discussions of this item. Can I point out that councillors who have declared an interest should now leave the meeting Can I point out that councillors who have declared an interest should now leave the meeting to allow for this item to be considered? And given that this is the final item on the agenda, the councillors will not return to this meeting. As the mayor is absent and I am the deputy mayor, can I ask for a nomination for Chair to take over instead of me? I'd like to know. John McCabe, please. John McCabe has been moved, is that seconded?
He's Robert.
Seconded, seconded, councillor Atkinson.
So we've had councillor McCabe moved and we've had councillor Roberts, did you say? Roberts.
Yes.
Roberts. Councillor Robertson, you have to leave the meeting. You've been nominated.
Roberts, Lady Mayor.
But as you, you're supposed to leave the meeting now, you can't nominate someone.
Oh, well, I'm still here.
Well, you shouldn't be.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. So we've had councillor McCabe moved. Are there any other nominations? Thank you very much. I will now leave this meeting.
Bye.
But Chair, I think everybody who needs to leave the meeting has left.
Thanks for that, Paul. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Can I ask all councillors who have declared an interest in this item to please leave the meeting if they have not already done so? Could I ask Strategy and Democracy if they have? Can they inform me if that's correct, that everybody who has declared an interest in this has left?
Yes, Chair, everybody who needs to leave is left.
Okay, Paul, thanks for that. The next report is from the acting head of legal services, John Rumney. Could I ask Mr Rumney to present this report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is firstly to inform council of the decisions made by its Standards Committee at a hearing which took place last Friday, and secondly to put to council a number of recommendations which the committee made. On the nineteenth of March, Standards Committee considered a report.
I'd read John's heart to hear your mind.
Sorry, I'll hold my microphone a bit closer. Sorry, councillor. On the nineteenth of March, Standards Committee considered a report prepared by the council's monitoring officer, which set out her findings in respect of a complaint received by the council in July 2020 concerning the conduct of councillor Robertson, in particular the content of emails and Facebook posts which he had published. The complaint, which was submitted by Mr Matt Brown, who is the executive director of operations for NHS South Tyneside Clinical Commissioning Group, was that over a period of months councillor Robertson had sent emails to him and published Facebook posts about him, which breached the member's code of conduct. The complaint was that the communication demonstrated a failure to treat the complainant with respect, they amounted to bullying of him and that they brought both the council and councillor Robertson's office as councillor into disrepute.
Chair, sorry, John, can I just, the point of order, please? Chair? Mr McCabe, councillor McCabe? Councillor McCabe? Chair, whatever you want to call it.
Councillor Roberts, what is your point of order?
My point of order is, councillor McCabe, has councillor Hobson, after she left that room that you've just sat with?
Councillor Hobson has left, yes.
We don't know that, we definitely can do it. Can you turn your media camera on so we can have a look?
Well, I don't know how I would do that, but, you know, I take personally that you don't agree that I'm verifying as the Chair of this committee that that person has left. I would not break the rules of anything.
I'm not saying you would, John.
I can assure you, I can assure you that Gladys Hobson, councillor, has left this room.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chair, Mr Rumney, can you continue with your report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Robertson did not dispute sending the emails or publishing the Facebook posts. He accepted that the emails were sent to him, were sent by him when he was acting in his official capacity as a councillor, but argued that the Facebook posts were published when he was acting in his personal capacity only. As set out in paragraph five of the report, the committee found by a majority of four to one that due to the emails appearing on Facebook interspersed with posts concerning the same issue, that councillor Robertson was acting in his official capacity at all material times and that therefore the code of conduct was engaged in relation to all of the conduct complained of. The committee upheld the findings that councillor Robertson had breached general codes one, two and four by virtue of the content of the communications as well as by permitting other comments to remain on the Facebook accounts that he used. The committee considered that an appropriate and proportionate response to the findings would be firstly the issuing of a formal censure of councillor Robertson in respect of his breaches of the code and secondly the reporting of its decision to full council. In addition, the committee also made the following recommendations to council as part of what it considered to be an appropriate response. The first recommendation is that council itself issues a formal censure of councillor Robertson in respect of the breaches he's found to have been committed. The next one is that councillor Robertson's access to council facilities be restricted in that all email communications sent by him to elected members and council officers, either from his council email address or any personal address, be diverted into a single email inbox to be monitored on a daily basis on weekdays by officers and for such communications to be forwarded to the appropriate individual or service for consideration and if appropriate, action as soon as practicable. In addition, emails sent from councillor Robertson's council email address to email addresses of the clinical commissioning group be barred. The committee recommended that if accepted by council, the above restrictions should take effect immediately and to run for a period of six calendar months, that is, if accepted today until the twenty-second of September. The committee also recommended that council consider induction material and election member training more generally and ensure improvements are made where necessary to rectify any deficiencies or perceived deficiencies in readiness for the local elections in May. It is those recommendations which council is asked to consider. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Rumney, thank you for that. Council is recommended to implement the sanctions outlined in paragraph eight C and eight D of the report in the manner and for the duration specified by the Standards Committee and to request and authorise officers to consider induction material and elected member training so as to ensure improvements are made where necessary to rectify any deficiencies or perceived deficiencies in readiness for the local elections in May 2021. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Roberts?
I'm with councillor McCabe. First things, John, councillor McCabe, I think the emails, if he's done emails to an outside body, why should his emails be blocked to the council? He's never disrespecting anybody in the council. He has called Matt Brown a liar. Matt Brown did lie to the committee that you were on as well. So we know he's a liar. So I can't understand why they want to take his emails away from the council. That's my first point, mate. My second point is, I can't understand why they're pushing and re-rolling this John Robertson through the committees, through the Standards Committee, when we've got Ed Malcolm, who was a fraudster and a thief, and it's been put out there and that's getting brushed into the carpet by the monitor officer, which is a disgrace, man, because they're trying to gag John Robertson and it's making the council look like a laughing stock. The second, the third one, John, is that you brought this through on the nineteenth. Why wasn't the eighteenth one brought through when it was plain blackmail, threatening intimidation by councillor Peacock towards the CA? That's gone quiet. And also councillor Hobson, she's sitting there and she's got it and councillor Atkinson have both done things themselves. Councillor Hobson's on that committee and calling people for bullying and yet it's still on her council file, a Labour council file, for her bullying a disabled gentleman in a meeting. And councillor Atkinson and councillor Hobson were there totally talking about stuff and they've already condemned councillor Robertson even before the winter meeting. So that meeting should not be held. I'd just like to know if councillor Atkinson or is Ian Malcolm still there dressed up as a woman and calling himself Atkinson now, please? Thank you, that's my lot, mate.
Well, thanks for the several questions and comments there. Could I ask Mr Rumney to just give a quick reply on the formalities and the jurisdiction, please?
Thank you, Chair. I think I've got all of the points made. It's my understanding that the decision of Standards Committee to block, well, not block, but divert council emails to council officers and members was because of a finding that in circulating emails to a wide audience, councillor Robertson was using that with the aim of intimidating and harassing the individual to whom the email was originally sent. In relation to other code of conduct complaints, until they reach the stage of Standards Committee, then they are confidential and it's not appropriate or possible to provide any information about them. In relation to the standards hearing that took place on the eighteenth, Standards Committee took the decision that there was no need to refer their findings to full council and I think that was on the basis of the response to that complaint by the subject member in those circumstances. I'm not aware of any information relating to councillor Hobson and I'm not aware of any information relating to the point councillor Roberts made about councillor Atkinson. I'm not sure if he wants to clarify that.
So are you saying you've never heard the tape records them discussing it in the Labour, the Labour meeting before they had the hearing? Is that what you're saying, John?
No, councillor Roberts, I haven't heard it. I saw the transcript that was part of the evidence at the hearing.
So you've heard it, but you're still taking that. Do you not think that these councillors should have stepped aside once they're discussing stuff before it's actually come to the committee?
The issue of declarations of interest and conflicts of interest was addressed in detail at the Standards Hearing.
So even though this was brought up about these two councillors talking about it and wanting to condemn beforehand, that's quite, they're quite happy with that going ahead, are you?
Well, the evidence wasn't quite that, councillor Roberts.
The evidence was there for plain to hear, we would chuck the book at them at the next one.
That's not the complete record of the evidence, councillor Roberts. But it was discussed, it was discussed in detail at the Standards Committee hearing.
It was said there and we'll bring it out here and show you that it was said, we would chuck the book at them at the next one. So that was two councillors discussing it and making their mind up even before you went in front of the committee. And that's democracy for you. That's democracy and transparency, is it?
Yep. Two more question, questioners. Councillor Hamilton, you have a question?
Do, yes. I wasn't able to watch the Standards Committee on Friday, so I took this afternoon off work to read through all the papers. And I have to say, I was quite shocked at some of the language and the things that I saw. So I would not, under any circumstances, condone that type of behaviour. I think the abuse was horrendous. I'm going to say that now. But I do have a question about the sanctions and it's a genuine question. And I want to give an example as to why I'm asked, which will explain why I'm asking the question better than if I did it myself, if that makes sense. At the weekend, I was contacted by councillor, another councillor colleague, I'm not going to say which one it was, but it wasn't councillor Robertson, about an issue that related to somebody who lived in South Shields. And it was somebody that I wanted to put in touch with, the South Shields MP. That councillor sent me that person's email and telephone number. Now, if that councillor had not been allowed to send council an email directly to me and it had gone to an officer, by not having the permission to share that individual's information with me, would they then be reaching the GDPR because they're sharing that information with somebody they're not allowed to share it with? And that for me is a genuine concern because me as a resident, if I was contacting my councillor, I'm not sure that I would be confident doing that if it was going to the inbox, an inbox that somebody that I don't know who they are could monitor, because that could include personal and sensitive information about me. So I have some concerns. To be fair, I would have probably put in stricter sanctions. You know, there's options to remove people from committees and things that I would have probably looked at. But I think removing the email access to other councillors and the council officers could just present that issue in relation to GDPR. And I do have some genuine concerns about that because, as I say, it was a case that came up at the weekend for me and if that person had sent it to an email, that email with those contact details in and I hadn't been the person that read it. Now, I have passed those contact details on to the MP because I was given permission to, but if I hadn't had the, if, I'm just really, I don't know if I'm making sense or not, but I am really genuinely concerned that by doing this, we could be putting ourselves at risk because it could be a GDPR issue and it could prevent that councillor from then doing the job that he was elected to do by not being able to send the information to me, for example. I hope that makes sense.
Right, okay. And Miss Robertson, would you like to comment on that as a monitoring officer, please?
Yes, of course. The councillor still has use of his mobile telephone and could communicate by use of his mobile if it was to communicate contact details of a resident or constituent and to ensure that there were no GDPR issues. This is simply, you know, his use of emails, which would then be filtered through, as I understand it, a single access, which would then be sort of filtered back out to the relevant person. But like I say, the use of the telephone is there if he needs to communicate more quickly.
Thank you very much for that.
I've just come down.
Next question, next question is from councillor Paul Milburn.
Thanks, councillor. Yeah, I'd just like to call councillor Hamilton's concerns, but probably for a different reason. I think the email suppression sanctions, they don't make any sense at all to me. I think they're totally inappropriate, but why suppress the ability to contact officers and members when they clearly have nothing to do with this case at all? This, this case, the complaint, was led by a member of a public body, nothing to do with the elected member or a council officer. So I don't see the relevance at all. And on top of that, I think basically what you're doing is you, these sanctions, they're actually suppressing the voice of the good people of Felgate, Carthross and Hedworth and I just don't think they're appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, thanks for your comments. Councillor Purvis? Councillor Purvis, you have a question?
I don't have a question. I didn't put my hand up.
Such a lovely woman.
Okay. No more comments or questions from everybody, okay? Well, there's no more questions.
Chair?
Yes, councillor Roberts?
Yes, Nicola Robertson, the monitoring officer didn't answer councillor Hamilton's question about the data protection in emails.
Good luck. She has given an answer.
Wasn't clear.
Well, I'm satisfied with this, so.
Well, that's fair enough then.
Okay.
Sorry, councillor McCabe, I do want clarity on the data protection because that was my main concern. It wasn't about how they can contact me, it was about the data protection. That is my main concern and I would like some clarity on that because I took legal advice this morning and I was told that I could be in trouble if that was the issue. And I'd also like to propose, therefore, that we take.
Yeah, can I just check, Angela, just come in there. I'll get Mr Rumney, our head of legal services, to give an answer, a qualified answer on that. John Rumney, could you answer that question, please?
Thank you, Chair. I would make two points in relation to the concerns from councillor Hamilton. Firstly, there is the issue of implied consent. If someone contacts an elected member with a particular issue that they would like that person to resolve, then there is implied consent that the councillor can speak to officers and anyone else who would reasonably be expected to be involved in resolving that problem. If in doubt, of course, members can seek express consent from anyone who approaches them.
Which is what I do.
It, yes, I mean, there's implied consent, if in doubt, you can seek consent, but of course, on top of that, aside from the restrictions on email communications, the emails will be diverted into a particular account, and then from there transferred to the appropriate service to respond. Implied consent would cover that, in my opinion, but of course, as the monitoring officer advised, it is still open to members to pick up the phone and call each other if that would assist in resolving any of the problems.
Yeah, I'm on mute, John.
Okay. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed, agreed.
Agreed. I will not have a vote on this.
Not agreed.
Not agreed.
Does any dissent, envoys, we're going to have a name vote if you wish, councillor Roberts?
Yes, please, a name vote, then we'll see which one's...
Councillor McCabe, I did suggest that we take each of the sanctions separately, a vote on them, because I'm not comfortable with voting on one of them. Up to council, obviously, but I'm not comfortable with voting on...
Who's keeping saying no? Who's keeping saying no, Councillor McCabe?
I don't know, I don't know who, I can't hear that, Councillor Roberts. Okay, we're going to, the report is the report, and we will agree the report, or not agree the report, and each individual councillor can make their own mind up on that particular issue. That's my answer on this.
So, is it going to be a name vote?
Going to go to a name vote. Could I call upon John Rumney, Mr Rumney, to carry out the vote, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'll let you know, I'm going to put you on mute so we don't have any feedback in this room while I do the vote. Councillor Imar?
Agreed.
Councillor Anglin?
Agreed.
Councillor Atkinson?
Agreed.
Councillor Bell?
Agreed.
Councillor Brady?
So, we're still on mute?
I'm coming back to Mr...
Councillor Brady, you just need to turn yourself, turn your mute off. There we are.
Is that better?
That's it?
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Carter?
Agreed.
Councillor Dean?
Agreed.
Councillor Dix?
Agreed.
Councillor Dixon?
Agreed.
Councillor Donaldson?
Agreed.
Councillor Ellison?
Agreed.
Councillor Lee?
Agreed.
Councillor Foreman?
Agreed.
Councillor Francis?
If there's no option to take it in part, then agreed.
Councillor Gibson?
Agreed.
Councillor Hamilton?
I'm going to abstain on the grounds that I can't put myself in legal jeopardy.
Councillor Hay?
Agreed.
Councillor Kilgower?
Agreed.
Councillor Lees?
Agreed.
Councillor N Maxwell?
Agreed.
Councillor Ne Maxwell?
Agreed.
Councillor McCabe?
Agreed.
Councillor J Milburn?
Agreed.
Councillor P Milburn?
Inappropriate, disagree.
Against, thank you. Councillor Peacock?
Agreed.
Councillor Porthouse?
Agreed.
Councillor Purvis?
Agreed.
Councillor Roberts?
Disagreeing, and everybody, you should hang your head and shame that you've all got something to hide, everyone is.
Thank you.
Money going missing, everything, is all...
Agreed.
Councillor Strike?
Agreed.
Councillor Taylor?
Agreed.
Councillor Traynor?
Agreed.
Councillor A Walsh?
Agreed.
Councillor M Walsh?
Agreed.
And Councillor Welsh?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Councillor McCabe, who's this host that keeps muting me when I'm talking? Don't even purvis this man in my face, you horrible woman. They've all got something to hide. All the monies have been thieving for years, it's all coming to an end.
Thank you, Chair. The results of the vote are 31 for, one abstention and two against. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Mr Rumney. That concludes the business for today's meeting. The live streaming will now cease. So, we're going to thank everybody for their attendance today. Can I take this opportunity to wish you a safe journey home, if you're not already there, and can I thank any members of the public and press who have been watching today? And that concludes the business today.